Guardrails. You're here to talk about guardrails?
Reason for sure.
Uh, is there a report?
Yeah.
There is.
It's in your package.
I made copies.
Oh, yeah.
Take one like a high mark.
And then there's a little addition that I added in. Well, it's kind of not the same. It's not the same.
Where is it?
It is, but it's after.
Oh, Henry, oh, yeah.
Here's your copy.
That's, that's.
This is a follow-up to the little meeting we had, I assume.
Yeah, so you met, you met with Fauze a while. I was away. And from what I came to understand, we were basically just ready for kind of quick little description and cost estimate for like the different options. Last time I had seen you guys before I went away, we were talking about walls. I hear that was dropped. So, you know, nothing earth shattering here.
No, no, there is. It's, it's wrong. The report's wrong. I don't know, I don't know if he was sitting in the same room that we were or not. The report's wrong.
Okay.
We had a, we have a preferred guardrail that's not even pictured in here.
Isn't it the steel corner?
No, that's this one.
Oh.
Yeah, I, David, I sent you this afternoon, the, um, there was one that Al took of Lincoln.
You know what's missing from this? A page.
Well.
Is it the wood?
Yes, it is.
Well, I don't know.
It would be cable.
There's six missing, right?
Yeah, so I, I made a copy.
Four and six.
And also eight. Right, so go back to the other.
Black and white.
Go back to the black and white. Page two, page three.
Black and white has wood on it.
But that's still not it.
No, but this is what's missing.
That's still not it.
This is, this is what's missing now.
Okay, this one. That is the, that's the one we said.
Yeah, I can, cable, right?
Well, no, it's, he's got, he's got, well, it's a, it's.
All right, let me, here.
He's got this sucker. That, that looks like a highway.
Right, it is. So let me just talk about any cable guardrail. You need to have a clear area behind it to work. They need to work like a net. So the posts are meant to give, and the cables are meant to, to give. So you need a clear area of about at least 10 feet, but it depends on size and speed behind it. So, you know, doesn't matter, the wood post, the metal post on the cable, you could have either one, but you need a clear area behind it. So maybe incorrectly, we didn't deem those as appropriate for Weston. I don't see a lot of areas where you have at least 10 feet clear behind them. Also, secondary, those require more attention than the other ones. They need to be tensioned, um, over time. So they're, they're like, basically you're buying like a, a spring. So, um, I'm sorry, I screwed up the copying, but they are, they do work just like the cable one. Now, if you have thoughts where that might be appropriate, where you do have that clear area, and it's not a defined clear area, because I talked to the guy who wrote this, it's dependent on speed really, and kind of also angle impact, you know, so this is like math that has to go into it. But I just couldn't think of anywhere rural scenic road wise.
Drive through Lincoln.
Do they have, do you clear, do they have clear spots behind them? That's what they must because they're all over.
Highland, Highland where they just put in that stainless.
The galvanized rail.
Galvanized rail.
Right.
There is clearly enough space there.
Absolutely. Absolutely. That, that's just, I, there are two places where, where galvanized rails have just cropped up, I mean, in the last several weeks. One is at the entrance to the middle school, where there are now galvanized rails at the entrance going around the corner. For some reason that I, I'm, I'm at a loss to understand, because who's going to crash through those rails at, at 30 miles an hour? It's right at a corner. And the other one is, is just, just on the other side of Chestnut Street going down Highland. Galvanized rail, looks like a, looks like a highway.
And, yeah, so we, that's why it's a draft report. We can revise it. If you feel there are places it's appropriate, we can include it, but it's going to be designer specific. You know, they're meant to be like longitudinal, not like connecting a pedestrian, right? Like, like you wouldn't put them in front of.
A sidewalk.
On a, between a sidewalk and a road.
The road.
Over a bridge, no.
Or at a corner where the guardrails meant, kind of like I think they meant to do over one of them, like, the guardrails like a long, you know, almost like it's like a barrier for pedestrians, like they're worried someone's going to jump a curb or something like that.
Well, what we talked about was doing a matrix.
Right, and I added the matrix, but I didn't include everything.
But all of the, all of the conditions aren't here for the, for the matrix to be informative. And, and the matrix, this matrix also says options for scenic roads. I, I think that's one of the categories in the matrix.
That's fine, we can, we can add it back in. But I, you know, the, this, we wanted to kind of tell you about the limitations of the different ones, and on that particular one, there's, there's limitations.
But you could, you could put that in. It doesn't have to be in a narrative report. I mean, what we're looking for is, at the end of it, is a summary set of ma, of, of decision issues, um, and, and where the, where the rails might be appropriate, you know? And then there's a menu that, that, that people go to, so they, they're not just looking at galvanized guardrails or core ten guardrails. Maybe there are places, as there are in Lincoln, where this kind of a guardrail, maybe it's only once or, once in a while, but once in a while is better than core ten, you know what I'm saying? So if, if the, if the stipulation is there are places where you want this, you know, where you can put this in, you've got to have 10 feet behind it, or you don't want it near a sidewalk, or that sort of thing, those are, those are guidelines for where to install them. And, you know, in conditions, well, we decided at the last meeting was that in conditions where a rail like this would be suitable, it's preferable because you don't even see it when it's, when it's installed, it just disappears. So instead of, you know, this, you get nothing.
I, I understand the appeal of it. I also want you guys in the narrative to understand the limitations of it.
But someone has to, has to look at where these are in Lincoln and explain how they could be all over Lincoln. I can't imagine if they also have the 10 feet behind them.
There's a sidewalk behind this one, by the way.
Okay, so let's not assume they're doing it right.
Okay.
Because when you hit that, it's meant to give.
Well, this, again, one of the parameters is speed. How fast, what, you know, is, are, are people going to be going on the road? This one's, by the way, on one of the highways. This I think is on, this is I think on Lexington Street, one of the major streets through Lincoln, so.
Is it possible you need 12 feet like that says when you're going 60, but you only need five feet when you're going 30, or?
Yeah, relates to design speed and kind of like angle of impact.
Right.
But, you know, so, you know, like I said, we can do everything you ask, but let's not assume what they did is right.
Well.
Because I'm not quite sure, you know.
What we asked at the last meeting, and, and we're getting people, personnel switch here.
Yeah.
What we asked was if the guy'd go to Lincoln, drive through Lincoln, see what is there, and just assess it for himself, you know? What, what's there? Does, is it right? Is it not right? Does it work? Does it not work?
Your, your concern is listed here as number two column, the clarity needed behind the barrier to collate as higher, but it doesn't give any numbers. It'd be nice to say, given all those factors.
Because it's not a, it's not eight, it's not 10, it's a, it's a formula that they, that's dependent on the barrier.
Yeah.
The travel speed.
The angle.
The angle.
Right.
I, because I did ask that question. Give me a number. Give me 10 feet, give me 12 feet, because I don't, I don't have a dog in this fight.
Yeah, so it's a range, sounds like, yeah. So whatever that range is, it'd be nice to have a sample.
I mean, how many people in, is there a lot, are there a lot of incidents where people are crashing into guardrails in Weston? What is, what is the rate of collision, you know, on an ordinary street in Weston, in the guardrails? Is it something, is that some, I can understand why that would be a consideration if you were talking about reasonably high-speed roads.
So you're talking about the need to have them, or the?
No, the, but one of the, one of the considerations in the, in the wired guardrail is that it's, you, you'd have to, a longer length to repair when there was a collision. Let's, let's see, what, how would I put it? Comparatively long ways of barrier that must be replaced following an impact to the system to remain, to maintain effectiveness. But in this case, you know, there's, one of the issues here is what, what are the guardrails really doing? Is it, is there, is there a history in Weston of people just driving off the road and hitting guardrails? Or is it just, is it a barrier that's almost more visual than it is preventative? My suspicion is that for most roads in Weston, it's more visual than preventative.
So, let, I mean, if you put it up and it's not maintained properly.
Yeah.
And then something happens, the town will be liable, whether it's needed or not needed. So, so if it's in a spot that was not needed, but the town let it go to seed, and you hit it, and the person went farther than they should, the town will be liable. So the, the, the wood ones, the metal ones, basically they hit it, generally they're, depending how, how you hit it, but you know, you may have to replace a piece or something like that. The, the, the cable ones need people to come out and tension the cables again, you know, that type of thing. So it's, it's.
It's like a tennis net.
Like a tennis net.
I want to point out that in our packets on our desks, I've pulled it.
Yeah.
Everybody saw it.
Yeah, we've done that.
I think mine was the last one to find that out.
I think one of the, one of the things I wanted to bring up is, you know, whatever your taste is, you know, we've heard a lot of, you know, they're, the wood ones are more expensive, right?
Yeah.
But you're not putting in miles of this stuff. Your typical application is probably like 50 feet.
Well, one of the things that we're encountering, at least that I've noticed, is that we're getting guardrails now in places where we've never seen guardrails before, ever. I mean, the, the, I have never seen a guardrail on Highland Street in 45 years. Never. And all of a sudden, now there's a guardrail. I, I've never seen a guardrail at the entrance to the middle school in all the years I've lived in Weston, and now we have two galvanized guardrails going around the corner.
Right, so we talked about that before, is that? There's similar like traffic lights, there's warrants for these things, right? Like, you can't just dump a traffic light wherever you want. It's not quite the same, but there are warrants, there's our geometric requirements for where these things would go, like, you know, on certain roads, you'd get a drop-off in a certain distance from the traveled way, on a certain speed, you'd need a guardrail. So if that's not happening, if they're just popping up, you know, that's, that's.
Well, I don't know about anybody else, but the problem, Dave, that I have is that I don't have time to research whether every new guardrail that, that crops up is actually something that would be mandated. I know that when, when, when they designed a guardrail at the Route 20, Route 30 Wellesley Street intersection, a galvanized guardrail that goes back something like 300 feet along Route 30, if you look at the topography of that one, and by the way, they're proposing a galvanized rail there too, if you look at the topography, I'm hard pressed as a, just an ordinary guy to figure out why in the world is a guardrail there. It's, it's, it's just a swale. You know, it's not a drop-off, it's not a ditch, it's just a swale. So I don't, I, who, who can say whether it's mandated or warranted or not unless you're some kind of a traffic expert?
It's not for, it's, I'm just saying, the questions, that's the question that needs to be asked, the people who are putting them in, what's the warrant?
It would be the DPW.
Well, what do you think the answer's going to be?
They.
Everywhere.
If it's not.
Safety.
What do you think the answer's going to be?
Safety.
That's, that's, that's an MHD funded project, right? That reconstruction?
Actually, no.
No.
This, that's, that's a, that's a town-funded project. It's on the, it's on the, on the.
Tip?
It's on the tip.
So it's, but it's done, so that's done to MHD standards?
Well.
Because it's funded through the tip. So what I'm getting at is, there's a professional designing map?
Yeah.
That, you know, if you guys, deep, talk, say, talk to your designer, what is the warrant for the guardrail there? Show us the section, why is that needed? That's it. That's, that's the question that needs to be asked, if they're popping up in too many places.
I mean, I can contact Steve Bog and ask him what the warrants are for putting in those guardrails.
Okay, I mean.
It would be nice to find out well in advance as opposed to after the fact.
They bought a bunch of guardrail.
Yeah.
That was the problem. They bought a whole lot of galvanized guardrail. And now they're, they're, they feel they have to use it because it's, they have stockpiled galvanized guardrails in there, and they've got to put the guardrail in. And what we're trying to do, and it's a losing fight, is produce a report that says, we're not really in favor of galvanized guardrails, we want a, we want a viable set of alternatives that mandate what the town's policy is under different circumstances. That's all we're looking for. So that the choice is not galvanized guardrails, or, you know? And so if we could get there, that would be ideal. What rails are appropriate in what circumstances? What do we recommend under what circumstances? And the, the most preferred one, although apparently it's a quite a limited possibility, is the one that disappears the most. And then you go from there, you know, okay, if you, if it's in a, if it's not the right location, or, then you go, then, then you, you look at the next one, which would be the wooden guardrail, you know, with the, with the backup post, and, and, and then maybe the core ten guardrail under certain circumstances, but a clear set of guidelines so that you hand them to somebody with a truck and DPW, when you say, this is what we want, the town wants to put in, in different places.
So I have a question on the tensioning. How often do you have to tension the cable?
You have to test it. I don't, it's, it's, it's both, it's, I don't know if it's a year, if it's every two years, it's more than like a town DPW is going to be doing. So when you see those things and they're sagging, that's, that's a kind of a liability for the town, even though they're all over town now, the old ones.
Well, the old ones are, a lot of those are state highway.
We have construction tables on them.
Well, that's because it's right on the edge of a cliff.
An appropriate place to put up a guardrail.
So Al, to reinforce your point, it's a little ironic, the Marion Street Bridge, it's a scenic road, it's a historic neighborhood, they took down a wooden bridge, a beautiful wooden bridge, put up a new wooden, beautiful wooden bridge, and they put up steel guards, right?
But actually, it has core ten on the bridge itself.
Yeah.
And then it transitions to galvanized.
Yeah, yeah, but they could have put, as I looked through this document here, they could have put beautiful wood, steel reinforced guards.
But they could, you know, they just continue with the, I think there's a picture in there of, or maybe something that's, of the bridge, of a bridge, wood bridge, I mean, transitions to core ten.
Yeah.
Right, but there, interestingly enough, that your colleague said that in situations where there might, where there might be the possibility of colliding with the core ten, you actually don't want core ten near the, near the drive surface because it's not, it doesn't resist dents as, as well as the galvanized rail, so.
When we dug in a little bit deeper, it, the issue with the core ten next to the driving lane is their concern about salt spray and that hastening its demise.
So this is, this one, the photograph here is right on the road surface, so that would be one we wouldn't recommend.
If the town, if the town's willing, and again, hastening its demise is 15 years versus 50, you know, again, I don't see that as like an unreasonable.
Return.
Return.
Which is, which by the way, is another part of the, of the, of the matrix, and that is initial cost versus longevity. You know, the, the first presentations that we had were quite good in that they showed that, actually, they sort of balance out that the, the wood, at least for the wood guardrail and the, and the galvanized, because the wood guardrail may cost a little bit more in the beginning, but it, but.
Lasts longer.
But it lasts longer. Or maybe that's not, you don't, you no longer feel that one.
No, it lasts long, it was the, it lasts as long, the repairs are cheaper.
Okay.
But, but that kind of stuff isn't spelled out here, and there's, there's a lot of very general things like, um, for the core ten, it says due to corrosive properties, it will also need to be replaced more often, but that needs to be quantified if a town has a higher lifecycle cost, quantify it.
So, so that matrix that we're talking about, I saw, it's about, what's about, 40 boxes? Decision tree?
Well, this isn't complete, though.
I know.
Okay.
So by the time we're complete, it's going to be about 80 boxes. All right? At the end of the day, don't you want to just say, here are our four preferences? Any designer who comes to town and does these things are going to have to design it. They can't just pick them. They, they, they're going to have to, you know.
Guidelines.
They're going to have to follow their design guidelines for them to go in. Here are our four that we like, with the last one being this galvanized, which is, it's not the cheapest, but it's the cheaper of the, the robust, robust ones, right? The other three are more expensive, but not prohibitively so, okay? I, that, honestly, that, that's getting a little, I, I, is that where we had, we really would just want the next people to put in the guardrails to put in the nicer-looking ones in appropriate sections. The designers are still going to have to do their designs.
I guess we're wondering, I mean, I don't know, you don't need to have three different speed categories, but wouldn't you possibly need one speed if it was less than 30? I mean, one type, if it was less than 30 versus another type if it was over 30, and also if it was a scenic road versus not a scenic road?
These are the speeds we talked about at the last meeting.
I thought we said that we'd need these various categories of speed.
Well.
So there are three distinct categories.
There were three distinct categories that we pointed out, and it was over 40, 25 to 40, and 25 or under. I went back and looked at the, the matrix that I had initially done, and then I also was under, and maybe I need clarification on this, I was under the understanding that we were just looking at scenic roads, but if we're not, I'll put the other.
No, scenic roads is one category of road, but I, there are roads in town that aren't, doesn't have a scenic road where we wouldn't be doing hand springs over galvanized rails.
Okay, so I will put the non-scenic road back, because I had that information there.
But we're not talking about state highways. We're not talking about 20, 30, 117.
30, yes, 117, yes.
We are talking about.
You can, because you will pay the, you can pay the delta for the rail you want. Right?
They're short stretches, so the difference in the price isn't going to be a big issue.
That's the point I'm trying to get at.
Yeah, I mean, maintaining is going to be more expensive.
I would, I would, I would use, what, what, what I kind of thought was, we wanted a simple tool to justify to the people who make the guardrail decisions, that the ones that we like are within the realm of possibility for us, a, a, you know, small upcharge in cost relative to, you know, the sizes that we're putting in. And that, I, you know, when they design something, and they should be designing something, they shouldn't just be popping them in, you know, the designers will pick the ones that are appropriate for the site in the order of the preference.
That's, that's right.
So.
That's all we're looking for.
Okay, so, so that's a lot simpler than we, 80 box, if this, then that, this, 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 which a designer's not going to use, he's going to have to go on his own.
Okay with me, but some, somewhere, after the, the pictures and all the text, you need to get to the, the, that. You need to get to some sort of.
A list.
A summary that says, this is our, this is what we think would be the, you know, the most, the best, this choice in, in this set of circumstances, this is the best choice in that set of circumstances, and, and that's it. And we hand that to the selectmen, and they say, thank you, and then.
And, and when people say, well, that's too much, they turn back a page, say, but look, it's only 10% more, or it's, you know, it's, yeah, it's $30 a foot more, but you only put it in 50 feet, so.
So there's a discussion in there, because that's, that's going to be one of the pivotal discussions in the conversation. There's a discussion in there that says, cost trade-offs are not necessarily significant because there are, there are various considerations about cost, and because the, the length of the guardrails we're talking about, we're not talking about 25 miles of them, we're talking about short distances, and so the differences aren't that great.
Which can all be brought out in the summary.
Yes.
In the summary, we're going to have a preference for ones where appropriate, the designers can run through. We want to vote on one, two, three, and four.
Oh, I think we.
Did that.
Yeah, we did, well, I thought we did.
Well, let's make it sure we got it right.
Wait a minute, really?
Well, my preference, if it, if it.
Cable with wood.
Cable with wood, if it, if it, if it's appropriate.
Where appropriate, that's, that's a caveat for all of it.
I think in general, the ethos is the lowest profile has the better score.
The least obtrusive has the better score.
Cable. Cable with wood, wood with metal.
Yeah.
Core ten, gal.
Correct.
Right.
So just the exact reverse of the way it's done here, right? I mean, it's done sort of way.
Well, this isn't meant to be.
No, I know, but it is kind of boiled out like one, two, three, four, and you're really starting to feel it, right, going across.
But.
Well, whatever, however.
We're just going to do the opposite of an executive, well, you know, a really executive summary or like a conclusion, or basically like list the four in the order, the preference, why, you know, they still need to be done where appropriate, and then, you know, a talk about the discuss, discussion of the costs, you know, relative to the amount of installation that a typical Weston project would put in.
Right.
Maintenance.
And you could actually, you could actually have the 80-box matrix instead of a written report, if, you know, as a, as the backup for the record for this executive summary. I mean, it could actually just be a, but however you guys do it.
I, I, I mean, I really just want to boil it down to something simple. You guys have a preference.
Yeah.
We want to list, you know, we want, just list a preference.
What would trigger going from one choice to the other, right?
You know?
It'd be various considerations.
Right.
It'd be speed of traffic, it'd be.
Step backs from the road, speed, drop.
Right. Offset, you know.
A, a designer who's going to get that list is, is going to go through his things and, this one's not appropriate because of this, so I go to the next one.
And the reason for why it's not appropriate would be listed.
He would, he would list it.
Right now, we don't, we don't really have a designer. I, I think these things are just getting put in by, by DPW crews. That's what I think. I don't think there's a designer anywhere within 100 miles of the, of all these installations at all. I mean, I'm just saying.
I mean, it.
The, the one on Chestnut, I would be amazed if that one got designed by anybody. Maybe I'm wrong, I could be wrong.
Do you know the answer to this question?
I don't, I mean, it, there, the thing is, is.
The one on Chestnut in Highland?
I'm sorry, Highland and Chestnut Corner, it's just north of Chestnut Corner.
It's a big stretch of it.
South of Chestnut Corner.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's pretty low.
They're not things you just want to drop in, because even though they kind of look like just dumb, easy things to put in, like if you don't do it right, you're going to get sued.
Well.
Like, they need to have the terminal ends, they need to have a certain one at back, you know, there's a lot.
Somebody actually.
We agree, exactly.
Somebody took the time and trouble to design the two curved galvanized rails that go into the middle school? Somebody actually designed those?
I didn't see them, but do the, do the terminal ends, like, do they?
Go into the ground?
Go to the ground?
Go to the ground or anything like that?
No, they just wrap around there.
So they, so it might have a new toy. Right?
Or, or not, yeah.
Cause that's, you know, cause that's, that's another piece of like where these are appropriate and not appropriate. You know, is where you start from.
Usually guardrails are meant for traffic that's running along a road, and a guy swerves off and hits the guardrail, and you're trying to prevent it from going down.
Right, meant to bounce you back in.
These are right at the corner. So that the theory is that you're, you're barreling down the road so fast, you're gonna hit the thing head-on at the, right at the corner. You go diving over the, so there's no, there are no tapers because there's no place to taper from.
Is there a sidewalk behind it or something?
Yes.
Uh, not in both cases, not, not on both sides of the road.
On one side is where the kids walk down to school, though.
Well, but on the other side it's not.
Ah, right.
Um, and is that, again, is, is that the reason for the guardrail, so people won't run them down? I, I don't know. I, you know, the question is, is it designed, or did it just happen? Uh, my suspicion is that some of these are just happening.
And we can talk about, in the conclusion, about them, the need, the need for them to be designed, right? Cause I think that's a consideration the selectmen wanna understand.
And need for there to be a reason for their existence in a spot that people need help with.
The war on efficacy, is what you're saying.
Yes.
Well, they're, they, like I keep kinda saying, they keep kinda like, like, number one A on like, transportation people getting sued. It's, you know, was it, you know, show me why it was supposed to go in there, right? Why, why is that there?
I don't think they're that concerned about, like, if there are places where the guardrail has completely fallen apart, and they haven't done anything about it here.
Well, it's, it's the one with the police stick.
You're more liable once you put it up, is that what you're saying?
Well, that one, that's the best.
So once you put it up, you're liable.
Right, like, doesn't that make sense, like?
Yes.
So, right.
So therefore we shouldn't have any of these things.
Be careful about when you put it up. So if you put it up where it should be, right?
Yes, so it's ten o'clock and it's moving on, and you know, I, I turn into a pumpkin. I just wanna say, I know, Al, you really like the wood post with the metal cable, because you feel they disappear more. I, I'm gonna throw out my opinion here on the taste. I actually like the wood with the metal back on the wood post, because I actually think the, the tension wire has more investment to it.
Turn phone over a little bit, that's all I have. Take a look at it before you decide.
Before I decide?
Yeah.
And mostly I like this because it's high-end, it's living with all, but-
Okay.
And it's very sturdy, and you don't have to do anything else.
Sort of the Jimmy Choo handbag.
Exactly. My Christian LaBoutin top.
Excellent. Now we're talking.
Now we're talking, okay, ten o'clock.
All right.
All right, so, is that-
Thanks, Dave.
Is that a reasonable set of-
Yeah, let's add this together.
Sorry.
Well, I hear the-
You mean the order.
Cable, wood with wood, core ten, galvanized.
I think number one on the list is none.
Yeah.
And then cables.
And the real one is why it's going.
That's absolutely right, you're right about that.
I think, I think, well, I think that would be the first paragraph in the conclusion, would be talking about-
The warrants.
Put them where you need them, only.
The warrant.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why you would, why you should not overdo it, right? And then-
Liability's problem when you overdo things and people die.
It, I'm, I'm, I'm projecting the audience that this is going to.
It's the select-
Right, so the concern about-
Safety.
Sa- well, money and I don't know.
Yeah, money.
Money, and, you know, safety, money, as it relates to money and-
Cost. Of, 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 of-
The cost.
May, of, construction and maintenance. And, and, then I guess appearance would be, would be a distant third for them, whereas we can work the other way around.
But, you know, the-
At least it shows up on the screen.
But the, you know, the, the delta you're paying for the appearance is, is, you know, minimal.
Minimal, that's, that's, that's a key point.
Right.
Right, that's a very key point.
It, says a thirty, when you say thirty percent increase, that sounds like a lot. But when it, that thirty percent represents twenty dollars per linear foot, and you put in a hundred feet, that's a thousand dollars. Okay, you know.
Right.
Yes, somebody has an accident, they pay for it, the town pays for it, right?
Yeah, it depends how active the town is on chasing people on that stuff.
Yeah, the town pays for it. Um, so, okay, so, so we have kind of an idea of where we're headed. Do we have an idea of when we get there?
Yeah, we didn't there now, pretty quick. I mean, it's, it's really putting together the one page that frankly, everyone's gonna read.
The executive summary.
The executive summary.
Yeah, okay. So, um, what, by the mid, by the middle of June, or? No.
We'll, we'll send out something next Wednesday for you guys to look at.
Okay.
So that you guys can look at it that Wednesday afternoon, whatever.
Okay, sounds good. That's very good. Cause they're proliferating like mushrooms, we have, we have to do something.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Great, thanks, Dave.
Yeah, I'm just taking off.